Welcome everyone, my name is Federico Tozzi. I'm the Executive Director of the Italy American Chamber of Commerce in New York. And I would like to thank everyone for participating in this town hall meeting. This is the second time that we host something like this. So it's a pleasure to have all of you here. It's an opportunity for us to introduce ourselves, to know better, to make ourselves available for questions, clarifications, and establish a direct contact with all of you. And of course, you know, to see all the new friends that are part of this wonderful program Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs. I believe we have our counterpart in Eurosportello Veneto, Union Camera Veneto. My colleague and my good friend, Gailene Gonzalez. Gailene, if you want to say a few words, it would be great. And then I will continue with my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Federico. Also for me, it's a pleasure to be here with you all. As told, Federico, yes, we are Union Camera del Benito. We are the intermediary organization that participates in this special action, Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs Global. We are located here in Venice, in Italy. And we build this fantastic partnership with Italy American Chamber of Commerce that are our partner at New York State. And I have to say that we are the only intermediary organization in Europe that build a partnership like this. And this is really useful for this program, but because we can guarantee and local support to the entrepreneurs that travel to United States. In particular, Federico and Alice Vegini, that will introduce us many important issues, many important tips regarding Erasmus for Young Entrepreneurs and how to build relationship with New York entrepreneurs, will give us in each important issues, important tricks to how build a successful relationship and will help to you all to participate in this project. The project is built like this. We are the formal intermediary organization. We work from Europe. We build the relationship in the IT tool. And we be supported by Federico and Alice from New York. And I will remind here from some question and answer. And I will give again the words of Federico. Yes, I'm happy. Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, Gailene. It's been great to work with you guys. And I hope we can continue this partnership for the year to come. I think when we started, it was a pilot project. We didn't know how well it was going to work. And I'm glad that, you know, after three years, we also participated for the second installment of this project with you. A sign, I hope that what we did was effective and was considered, you know, a success for both you as a partner and for the European Union as the entity that basically financed this project with us. So today, let's go with the next slides. So this is basically, we put together a simple presentation because the purpose of this is not you, you know, spending a lot of time talking about numbers or, you know, showing you graphs. It's more like hearing from you and giving you the opportunity to ask questions. And also, I think a very important part of this presentation today is that we have some testimonial. They will share their experience, which is great because you can hear from them and you can see what has worked and what has did not work. So how the program and how the relationship can be improved. So that's why I think it's a very, very successful initially. So first of all, what is I? I mean, if you're here, you should already know. But you know, probably you have an interest in this. It's a EUA, European Union funded exchange program for entrepreneurs, individuals in this case, from the 28 EU member states and 10 additional countries. The exchange lasts between one to three months and basically sees two parties, a new entrepreneurs and inexperienced entrepreneurs abroad, which also is the host company, the company that basically hosts the new entrepreneur that comes to United States, in this case, to New York. And of course, this is basically to give the opportunity to exchange knowledge and business ideas, contacts and experience. So the idea is to put together somebody that is actually starting a business idea or has already started in a European country that is part of this program with his counterpart in United States. It could be a similar company. It could be a company that basically operates in the same ecosystem. It could be a company that may be interested in expanding overseas in the countries where the new entrepreneurs is coming from. So we have different situations and we'll go through those. And the financial support for this program is provided by the European Union through the various organizations and various partners that are involved, in this case for us, Union Camera Veneto. And of course, the amount depends from the duration of the stay abroad and mainly by, you know, the duration, I would say. Financial support is a great thing. But one of the area where I always insist, because we had this discussion in the past, I don't think it should be the motivator for a new entrepreneur to come to New York or to experience the exchange. It's something that will definitely help. But you know, I don't think there should be the expectations that the support from the EU should be enough to cover all the expenses that he or she will incur in coming to a city and an area such as New York Metro, which, you know, as you can imagine, it's very expensive. So this is definitely something that helps you a lot. But you know, I think entrepreneurs should be motivated by more than by what they can get from this experience than, you know, the simple, you know, financial support. So next slide. We touched briefly on this point, basically. We started in the previous edition with, there was of course, United States, Singapore and Israel. My understanding is that, you know, there was a lot of interest toward the United States, which is also understandable. The United States is still one of the major markets. It's a big, you know, area especially to experience innovation. It's a country that attracts, you know, normally a lot of entrepreneurs. And as an ecosystem of startup here that can be very interested in exchanging, you know, ideas with their counterpart overseas. But also you have like a strong network of investors and serial entrepreneurs that are always looking to gain access to, you know, new idea, new products, new services. And of course, you know, the possibility to fund or expand their own business overseas. How can I participate? Well, as you know, there's a local point. We have like our friends at the Eurosportello Veneto. That's the place where, you know, you generally, especially for Italy, you can access for information and you can access for guidance on the program itself. There is an I online platform. Generally, as a support organization for this program in the United States, we actively, through Alice, that is also part of this panel, we actively participate in directing potential new entrepreneurs to the program. Whenever we find somebody that might be suitable to the program itself, we always encourage them to apply on the online platform. And of course, you know, another area where we are particularly active is the selection and the registration of host entrepreneurs in the area where we are focused on. So United States and mainly New York Metro area. As you can imagine, it is an online application. And the elements of your online application are very simple. You need your CV. You have to clearly express your motivation and expectation. If you are an I alumni, you have to demonstrate, you know, a learning curve, especially if you are applying multiple time for the program. You need to have a business plan. You need to have an idea that has to be in some way, you know, formulated, has to be told, outlined. Sometimes when we see applications online, one of the area where there is definitely a lot of room for improvement is to clearly define the objectives of this exchange, to clearly define the business plan. It doesn't have to be extremely detailed, especially on the financial side. But definitely, if we want to, I'm putting myself now in the shoes of an applicant. If I want to convince an host entrepreneurs in United States to host me, to have me with him and, you know, take advantage of his experience, his network of contacts and work with him as, you know, in this mentorship, you know, relationship, I have to be able to show him or her that I'm serious. I'm not, I, you know, I thought about this idea for a long time. I've done my due diligence. This is a term that you're gonna hear a lot. It's an element very important because this is something that we apply even as an organization that operates in various fields. Generally, personally, when I look at, you know, either a potential member for the chamber or somebody that wants to work with us or is asking us to support them in their efforts to enter the US market. One of the area where we try to be very thorough in the assessment process is to see how well they thought about it. How did they do their due diligence? Did they study on their own? Did they do the basic research that is required before they approached us? Because that is, it's a big issue. Of course, you know, you need to find a suitable host entrepreneurs. There are different ways. There are already a pretty substantial number of host entrepreneurs in the system already. But there are other ways. You can eventually find somebody on your own. And maybe you can suggest the host entrepreneur to contact us. So to contact our friends at Union Camera Veneto. We can guide them through the process of making themselves available on the platform. So we can give them more information about the problem itself. It doesn't have to be, you know, the exchange doesn't need to be to take place uniquely using the platform. The platform is a very important tool. But you know, the search and the matching program can be developed outside of the platform. But of course, has to be taken place using that platform. Because that's the way we use it to track the number of entrepreneurs that we can follow up on your application. And that's the only way to, of course, receive the financial support that the program itself is offering. Then you start your exchange. So if this exchange of communication between you and your chosen host entrepreneurs or vice versa, because let's not forget that, you know, you can have like also, you can upload your curricula. And maybe you're looking for a specific host entrepreneur. And you know, somebody else sees your application, might be interested. There could be another way of, you know, developing this exchange as well. So you may arouse, you know, interest in other host entrepreneurs that you probably haven't talked before. Finally, there is the start of your exchange. So the start of your change, it's relatively simple. We get involved as a support organization in New York to offer you an orientation on the program and also on what it means to arrive here. What are the requirements? What are the legal requirements? How you're gonna access the country? How does it work, you know, in term of immigration, your immigration status? And of course, we offer, you know, support in term of giving you the resources to find a place to stay. We don't find a place to stay for you, but we help you, you know, accessing to resources where you can find one. And we are always, you know, at your disposal. If you need during your exchange, we periodically check on you as a new entrepreneurs to see how well you're doing, you know, how well the exchange is proceeding. You are also, let's not forget, I will explain a little bit later, the nature of our organization and why also the Union Camera Veneto has chosen us. It's because we are not simply a consulting agency or, you know, a group of professionals that are supporting you. We are a network. So the Chamber of Commerce is a membership based organization. It has an extensive network. And we constantly organize events, initiative. And we give opportunities to the new entrepreneurs that are, you know, conducting that exchange to participate in these events that we organize, even if they are not, you know, particularly related to their field. And of course, you know, if there are events that are, you know, closer to their field, we will be always invited. But they, we try to give them the opportunity to expand their network contacts. So we want them that, you know, besides the experience that they're doing directly on the everyday basis with their host entrepreneur, we are also giving them the opportunity to develop a more extensive network of contacts using our platform and our membership. Next. Five domains of host entrepreneurs. Okay, so these are the areas where, you know, based on the type of companies that we were able to interest in this program. These are the areas where we have seen the highest number of exchanges. So we have like advertising, promotion, media and media related products and services. We have the legal and fiscal areas. We have the technology domain, IT, office communication, equipment, services and supplies. There is the hospitality industry, so hotel, restaurants, tourists, travel services with very different idea. I mean, it's like, you know, working in that domain. For example, I remember one of the exchange that we were involved in. It was a gentleman from Italy that basically he's a filmmaker and he does documentary. And he worked with one of the major tour operator and DMC here in New York Metro area to develop a video product for their the series of journeys that they were organizing for Italian America and going back to Italy and to discover their roots. So as you can see, this is a person that comes from a totally different background, but worked in hospitality with a very different role. So he was not coming from travel services itself, but he was basically a media content developer for cities of establishment, including the one, in this case, related to tourists. And of course, we have like clothing, footwear, leather, textile and accessories. As you know, we look at Italy especially, but also Europe. It's one of the areas where there's a lot of craftsmanship. And this is something that it is always particularly interesting to experience. So these are the main five domains of the host entrepreneurs. Next. Once again, we are still talking about the requirements. So the new entrepreneur will be, I want to spend a few words about what is, what do we consider a new entrepreneur? It could be, it has to be a person with less than three years of experience. And it could be somebody that still hasn't had like a company set up yet, but is, it's seriously, you know, working on a business ideas or somebody that has just started a company itself. So in this, in this particular case, we can see that the European Union, that is the developer of the program itself, has been pretty flexible in defining the rules, the parameters to, based on what a person can be considered a new entrepreneur. Regarding the host entrepreneurs, you need definitely somebody with experience. So we don't work with startup here in the United States. They need to be established for at least three years. Sometimes we conduct on request from our partners at Union Camera Veneto. We conduct visits. So we look at it and we go physically to their offices to see what they have. If their, you know, company is legit, we have way of making sure that they are actually incorporated. So it's a real company. One of the area that we are particularly careful with is that, I remember in the past, and we have Gailene here, and she remembers very well when we had host entrepreneurs here in the United States who were basically working with relatives in Italy to bring them here. This is one of the things that honestly raises a lot of flags. And we are very careful because also the European Union officials that are involved in the administration of the programs are very, very careful with. So we want to make sure that this is a real exchange. It's not just, you know, a way of getting a free trip to United States or to visit your relatives or, you know, taking basically advantage of the program only for the financial support, which was an area that I touched briefly before. That's not the spirit of the program itself. Next. Benefit. Well, I mean, it's like, I've been in this business, working with Italy American Chamber of Commerce for over 25 years. And I can tell you that I've learned a lot exchanging experience. The great thing about idea is that contrary to any other transactional exchange, ideas, they enrich everybody. So if you have an idea and I have an idea, if we exchange this, I have two and you have two. While, you know, in a simple transactional exchange, you have a product or a service. And once you give it out in exchange, you have my money and I have your product. But you know, I part away with something. So ideas are great because, you know, help us grow, help us becoming a better in what we do. So there is plenty of benefits for both. Let's start with the host entrepreneurs. As you can see, you can access new skills and innovative knowledge. Innovation is everywhere. Sometimes, you know, companies, they need, they need new ideas. They need a new approach. They need a new angle, if you consider what they're doing. So idea generation process, it's one of the major benefit for host entrepreneurs for sure. Gaining knowledge about foreign markets. Let's not forget that we live in a globalized world. And one of the benefit for host entrepreneurs in the United States is to learn more how similar businesses are working, are functioning in foreign markets and whether or not there may be opportunities for themselves to expand there. Partnership opportunity. We have seen in several cases that a new entrepreneur came to the United States and established such a strong relationship with a host entrepreneur that decided to represent the host entrepreneur with a new enterprise or with his own in the foreign, you know, market where he was coming from. So that's another example that works both for both. New entrepreneurs, well, definitely get experience with a seasoned entrepreneurs, somebody that has a lot of experience in the field. Probably US, it's one of the countries that people tend to gravitate around because of an established startup support system. The United States, probably one of the few countries where there is an established and really pretty structured financing system for, you know, bringing ideas to market. So to support entrepreneurs. Develop international contacts and getting knowledge about, you know, the US as a potential market for the service or the product that the new entrepreneur is developing. And of course, you know, exchanges of clients, suppliers and maybe, you know, even co-venturing opportunities. We have seen this many, many times. So the benefits are in both directions. And one of the things that really strikes me about this program that makes us feel very proud to have had the opportunity to work with our friends at the Union Camera Veneto is the fact that we have host entrepreneurs that have been, you know, constantly hosting new entrepreneurs from Europe. Which means that, you know, not only the program was successful, but also that they are particularly happy in what they are getting out of the product itself. Because if the program wasn't successful, we would not see such a high number of repeated exchange, which is something that makes us think that we are going in the right direction. Next. Okay, so few information about who we are. As I mentioned before, there is the European Union. This is a program coordinated by various partners. There is the Eurosham, the Association of European Chambers of Commerce and Industry in Europe. And it's been implemented by, you know, two major logo organization. One is the Camera di Commercio Italiana in Germany, IT Cam. It's our sister chamber in Germany, located in Frankfurt and in various other cities across Germany. And Union Camera Veneto, which basically it's located in Veneto, on the outskirts of Venice. And we are, you know, strictly related with Union Camera Veneto. We have their support structure and organization here in Logo for USA, particularly for the state of New York, which is the state that originally was chosen as a target state for the pilot version of this program. And so we are a local stakeholder, basically. A few information about us. So you have an idea about our organization. The Italy American Chamber of Commerce is the oldest bi-national and also oldest Chamber of Commerce in the United States. So we were founded in 1887. And we have been operating continuously since 1887. We are a membership based organization. We are recognized by the Italian government as one of the Camera di Commercio Italiana in Leicester, also Italian Chambers of Commerce abroad. We are also the founding members of what we used to be called the European American Chamber of Commerce. Now it's called LEAP, LEAP Atlantic Leaders in European American Partnership. I sit in the board of that organization together with my colleague of the Spanish American Chamber of Commerce, Belgium American Chamber of Commerce, German American Chamber of Commerce and French American Chamber of Commerce. So we are part of this, you know, entity as well. We have a large membership base, over, you know, 350 members, not just in the New York Metro area, but all over the United States. Alice is also, you know, working with us on developing our membership. She's also your point of contact for your, for I in New York. And she works strictly with Union Camera Veneto. And she works strictly with Unión Camera Veneto. We do a lot of events, initiative, either to support on membership base, but also to promote Italy and, and Europe in US, assisting companies, entrepreneurs and government entities, local development organization to do business in the United States. For example, one of the area where we work a lot is the, the protection of authentic Italian products, authentic European product, product covered by geographical indication, just to give you an idea. There's a lot of, and, and so we, we organize events with, on a weekly basis, basically. So last year, we, even with COVID, we started doing in-person event in September. And we did like an average of two events every month. And this year we are doing an average of four events a month. So, and, and one of the opportunities that we give to new entrepreneurs is also to be part of this network. So I think this enriches, you know, greatly their experience as well. That's it for us. This is what we do. I already spoke about this, so we can move forward. Orientation call. So basically, the platform allows you to, you know, organize an orientation call in which, once you've been accepted as a new entrepreneur, you, you, you are starting with your exchange. We sit down virtually with you and we give you like an introduction of the, the main aspect of arriving in the United States, meeting your host entrepreneurs, the expectations and the support that we are able to, to give you. Next. We also give you a YAKS membership. Within our membership, we have a special group called Young Executives, which, you know, we feel that it's pretty close to the spirit of the new entrepreneurs. So as a new entrepreneurs, you have for one year. So even after you leave, you know, your exchange, you're finished with your change, you are still part of our, our, our membership as a YAKS. And these are the benefits connected with this. So this is something that, you know, as a value on its own and allows you to also interact with other YAKS members. You have a visibility on our website. You will be featured rotationally on our social media. I can say that the chamber has over 8,000 followers on LinkedIn. So we have a pretty strong high number, I would say, of followers considering, you know, the size of our organization and what we do. So I think it's an excellent opportunity, an excellent value that we are providing to this. Next. Okay, so I don't know, Alice, how you want to proceed? I mean, I would gladly give the, I see that there are a lot of questions. So we can let the testimonials talk because I think they will be able to address some of the question and, or I can answer. But I would, I would, you know, gladly listen from them first.
I would prefer that the testimonials go first and then we can address the questions at the end in case after hearing some of their experiences, more questions arise.
Great, I'm done. So Mattia Pina, new entrepreneur and Gianluca Ribizinho, host entrepreneur. We start with, with you guys.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you can hear me. My name is Gianluca Ribizinho. I am one of the partner of the company called Modalita, who is specialized in Italian equipment and the design. We import our products from Italy and mainly for the food service and hospitality industry. And we are hosting right now. Mattia, who is helping us very much. Mattia, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself as well?
Yep. Hello, everybody. Thanks you for inviting me. Hi, I'm Mattia and as Gianluca said, I'm the new entrepreneur here, here in New York at Modalita. And I arrived here like three weeks ago. So I'm still at the beginning of my experience here and and that's it. If you want, I can exchange with you my experience here in these three weeks.
That would be great, Mattia. And just like if you can tell us a little bit about your process in finding Gianluca, matching up with him and any advice that you could give potential new entrepreneurs that are looking to do the same.
Okay. For me, my, my process to come here, it's been an adventure because of the pandemic, actually. Because I applied for the IGLBO in the early 2020, so more than two years ago. And actually, I have to say that the process to match with Gianluca was pretty easy. And he was my first choice and he, he responded to me like in a few weeks. And I was really happy for that because I was really excited to come here. And I was supposed to come here in March 2020, then something happened in the world. And so everything went like a little bit more difficult, but not for the IGLBO itself, but just because the borders were closed and basically it was impossible to do anything. So after like March 2020, I had to wait until like this November where the, the US borders opened again. And during this period, I just managed to do all the documents and all the, the process with the, with the organization. But what, what I can say to the new potential entrepreneurs who want to come here is that the process is really fast and quite easy. There are of course some documents and some things that have to be done. But for me, it was super long because of basically of the pandemic. So just because the borders were, were closed, so I couldn't come here. But for the rest, the most important thing is to mesh with the right entrepreneur. So I think it's very important to find the, the right project, which is related to our project and to the skills we want to acquire to, for our career. And being here, I work in marketing. So for me, it is a very nice experience because I found, I think the, okay, it's only three weeks, but I, I think the environment I found at Modalita, at the company I'm working in now is great and the people are great there. But another thing is that New York is a city full of marketing. So for me that I'm working here in New York, even just working around, go to the stores is very inspiring and very useful because I can see how they do marketing here in the city that is made by marketing. So everything here is marketing. So everything is, gives me a new stimuli to understand how things can be done in different ways in different countries with different cultures. And I think this is a good part, a good and very important part of the experience itself. Of course, it changes according to like the market and the skills you want to acquire. That's particularly important to, to me because I, I work in marketing. And another thing is doing an experience like this, especially after two years of pandeming, where doing anything was basically impossible from a work point of view, but for a, a human point of view as well, gives you a lot of energy and gives you a lot of freedom. I, I think that's, that's understandable and that's normal in any period. But after a pandemic, I, I think is the, all the experience gets something more from this point of view. And you already told in the presentation many, many things that I was supposed to say. So I won't repeat everything, but it's a good experience because I think it is an occasion to also to develop our skills in a different context. Because you have the, the chance to get out of your comfort zone. And that's very important because it gives you the chance to develop your problem-solving skills. And you can get here new ways to do things that, that you can get with you, you can take with you in your own country. So when you come back, you, you can gain these new skills that you can use in your own country. Of course, I am here since just three weeks. So it's a bit early to, to give a proper evaluation of all the experience. But this is what I'm living here now and what I'm getting here just by having this experience here, here now. I don't know if Gianluca wants to add anything from his point of view.
Yes, well, first of all, we are very, very happy that Mattia joined us. This is the second time they were hosting a young entrepreneur, also from Italy. And I really second everything that Mattia said. What we've noticed, even with the first experience is that, first of all, it was a great help for us to have somebody in the office on a day-to-day operations, specifically somebody with the skills like Mattia, which is helping us right now into the, in the marketing aspect of the business. And this is actually happening in a moment where we're switching a little bit our marketing efforts, you know. Before that, we were more like doing trade shows and events and things like that. But obviously with the pandemic, everything shifted online. So we are really strengthening our presence online and, and Mattia is being like a great, great help. But also I think it's really one of the main aspects of, of, of this experience for, for, for the young entrepreneur coming in a different country is really just like what Mattia said, opening their mind, opening their horizon, understanding new market, new perspectives. I think that, you know, like most of the, the people here in this panel that have been coming, you know, in, in the US from a different country, we all experienced that, especially in a place like New York with a lot of energy, a lot of things always going on. And, and this is also what we've noticed with the first entrepreneur we came. When he arrived, he was very shy, you know, more a listener than a speaker. And then I think after the experience here, I met him, we, we kept in touch. So we met multiple times when I was back in Italy. And I realized that his attitude was changed. He became more a go-getter. Really, before he was always behind, you know, listening. Now he became more active in also reaching out to potential customers and potential opportunities. And now I'm following on Facebook and before he was in the small town in the, in the, in the north of Italy. And now I'm seeing him traveling all over the world, like last week he was in, in Dubai. So I'm, I'm happy that he got that push from this experience.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much Gianluca and Mattia for sharing your experience. And I'm glad that you love this program. I'm glad, Mattia, that you're enjoying and learning more about, you know, Gianluca's company, Modalita, and using your experience to help each other and develop an improvement and improve his business. So thank you again. We're actually going to ask now Beatriz Diaz and Joseph Carbonell if they could also share their experience. I had the pleasure of actually seeing Beatriz at one of our events. So as Federico was mentioning earlier, we have a membership category and we do organize a lot of events for them. And Beatriz was able to join us at our fireside chat with one of our industry leaders from Cartel and, which was actually applicable to your current job. But just let us know a bit about your experience in general, also from the point of view of, you know, benefits from the YAKS membership as well as what are, how things are going with you and Joseph.
So first of all, good morning to everyone. I don't know if Mac is, is here, I think so. I don't know, like if he wants to start.
I am here. Yeah, I am here. My video has been disabled though. I don't, oh, there we go. Hold on, let's see if it works now. Ah, there we go. Great.
It's working.
Perfect.
I don't know if you want to start or...
Yeah, I mean, I can just introduce, I can introduce the company a little bit and then maybe you can talk a little bit. Does that sound good? Do that?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, great. Yeah, good morning, everybody. My name is, Joseph is my legal name. I, I go by Mac and my company is called Verdant. And we do sort of a broad range of landscape design and build in New York City and, and a little bit beyond. And we work with a lot of high-end residential and commercial clients, hotels and, and houses, building kind of intricate boutique landscapes throughout the city. And we've been in business for about 17 years and have a team of about 15. And Beatriz is the second entrepreneur who's come through the program for, to work with us. And we found it to be very successful, very inspiring to work along someone who's trying to get into, you know, a field similar to ours and interested to hear how things are going and, and kind of just sort of listen and, and comment on, on our processes and see what they see. Coming in from an outside perspective, it's always really engaging. And so Beatriz has been here for a little over a month, I guess. Is that about right? That's right?
Oh, a little bit more than one month, yeah.
Yeah, a little bit more than a month. And so she's are, we, for us, this is an incredibly busy time of year. We have people coming and going all the time throughout the office. And she has met the whole team and worked closely with various members of our team and engaged in a whole number of new projects to sort of see how we work with clients and go to different distributors and, and sales reps throughout the city. And been to a number of meetings and helped put presentations together and, and just been part of our overall dialogue of the office as we're kind of growing and making new inroads into the market here in the city. So.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And so the first time I heard about this program, at that point of my life, I was finishing my studies in interior design. And I was starting to think about like creating my own atelier. So this program seemed like perfect for what I needed at that moment. So the first time was to start my application, of course, by like writing my business plan. And actually, it was like funny because while I was preparing that file, I realized, okay, I really need help. I really need advice for someone who already went through the same process. Because like, I mean, thinking about like a business by, all by yourself can be like really frustrating. So that's why I think this program is like so amazing, like having this opportunity to have contact and sharing our thoughts with someone who already went through the same experience. Saves us so much time, so much like energy and I think like years of self-learning. So what I can say more like before I chose like Mac and Verdant, I had, I had like a few calls with other hosts. And when I was choosing for me, it was really important to find like a match, first of all, regarding the timings and so on. Besides that, I was looking for like a small business, like with a small team in order to have this more direct and familiar experience. And for me, this process of finding like an, an host, it was much about achieving a win-win situation. And so for me, it, it, it was like really important to prepare like a detailed activity, activity plan. And, and in my case, after some calls with Mac, and I prefer like a, I prepare like a draft and then we both talk and we adjust like what, what I'm going to do here, how can I help, how they can help me and so on. So I think it's really important at that stage to express needs and wants of both parties in order to align like expectations. So, so since, since the beginning, I felt like Mac has a lot of experience and he always show like happy to share that with me. He was always really open and interesting in listening to me and helping me. He was always really open and interesting in listening to me and helping me with all my questions. And and actually, like I'm an interior designer and I'm working here at that at Verdent. And as Mac said, they are they are working with landscape, which is also great for me, like to explore other scopes of my professional world. So during these three months here at the office, I'm involved, as Mac said, with all the departments of the team. And I am having this chance of being part of each step of a project management and development. So I think this experience like just to summing up, it's a great opportunity, of course, to enter the market without having a lot of experience. And and it's also great to explore, to expand like our networking and build some stronger relationship with people and partner. So we all know that everything is about context. Um so it's 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 great to to expand like our 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 network. And it's also great to receive like personalized inputs for someone who created like a successful company who is still growing uh in this very competitive market as New York. Uh besides all these uh advantages, I think this is all about like this social part of the experience. Uh like practi- practicing, practicing like a new language, living in a different country, like open the horizon, you know, like New York is like as this magic vibe. So also for me, as an interior designer, it's really exciting to be here and to have like this opportunity to visiting some showrooms and having the contact with all of these brands. Um so I think if I should, if I had to say like the negative aspect of the if there is a negative aspect, is like, of course, like an investment of time and a little bit of money, of course. But I think it's it's just that, and I think it's the cost, like everything has a cost, and I think it's more than fair. So so probably it's like too soon to make some conclusions for me to this experience. But despite everything I can share here and say, I think my only advice for people who are thinking about having this experience is just like, go for it. Um and like feel free to share my contacts with like someone who who is interested in having the same experience. And that I like, if if someone has questions or something, just email me. And I'm 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 glad to help if I if I can. Uh so I think it's that, let me just like thank you to Mac to like, he's been great with me. So thank you so much, Mac, and to everyone who is helping me having this experience, like all the parties involved. So thanks. And I think it's that's it.
Thank you so much, Beatriz, and thank you, Joseph, uh for sharing your experience.
Yes.
And I think actually, Federico, we do have one question from Sebastian um in regards to the visa. Um how to obtain, what are the procedures regarding obtaining visas for new entrepreneurs from EU going for an exchange to the United States?
All right, um so Sebastian, the the if you look at the regulation, uh what uh uh this is something that uh that, I mean, it could be seen in in a different ways. Uh theoretically, uh uh when you when you come to the United States for an internship, now uh the 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 appropriate visa should be, uh actually, it is, is the J one visa. So that's uh what you um will uh will need to get. But this program is a little bit different than a a traditional uh, you know, uh internship. So uh I I think uh uh the majority of the entrepreneurs that they actually enter the program, uh they uh they got into the country using uh uh based on the country, the the European country they were coming from, uh mainly the Asta because uh it's it is within the ninety uh days. And also, it could be considered like more like a visitor, you know. Uh uh some of them, they had a business B one, B two visa. Uh so the the and 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 if if you're the country where you come from allows you entering this uh in US without a visa, a visa, but just with Asta, that would be uh a choice that a a a lot of this uh new entrepreneurs, they they tend to make. Um so uh I see that there is another email. Um.
So the next question, it's still from Sebastian, is how long does it usually take to obtain a visa?
Well, you know, Sebastian, uh this is a a it depends, first of all, what type of visa you are requiring. So I'm not familiar with the, if I understand correctly, Sebastian, you are from Slovenia. So uh I'm I'm not uh very familiar with the requirement from Slovenia. So uh uh the time to get a visa in general, uh it depends from the type of visa you are actually asking for. Uh let's say a B one, B two visa. That's probably, it's it's a it's a it's a visa that people ask for a longer stay in US. Uh this uh it's generally a visa that can be given for tourism or for business reason. And uh it it gives you the opportunity to stay in this country up to um six months. But you know, let's make sure that we understand what he means. Up to means that the decision for how long you can stay is basically given uh by the immigration officer when you enter the country. So um you might have like a visa that says that you can stay up to six months and the immigration office decides that uh ask you questions and based on your answers, he he might decide uh, yeah, okay, so you got three months, so you get four this time. And 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 there is nothing you can do because the visa structure is that it says up to. Uh if you get a J one visa, uh well, it's a different thing. It's also uh uh it has a cost. Uh so besides the application, you need to find an host uh company in that which doesn't uh is not the host entrepreneur, the host entrepreneur, it's a, you need a a host company, I'm sorry, which is the host entrepreneur, and you need a sponsorship organization. In this case, it's us. Uh it is a it's a more complex process, uh also more costly. Uh it is, it is a process that basically allows you to stay also longer. So you can stay up to to eighteen months, depending on uh on the the your 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 experience and uh and whether or not you qualify for an internship or a trainees program. So it's a little bit more complex. So give you like a straightforward answer on uh how long does it take to obtain a visa? Uh I would say that it's very difficult because it depends on a series of factors. So uh if you come from a one of the European Union countries that does not require a visa, probably your best choice would be to come here with an Asta. If you do require a visa, you have to ask for probably a B one, B two visa. And that depends how easy for you is to get. Um uh how easy is for you to get an appointment with the local uh consulate, the US consulate. Uh and consider that uh after uh the pandemic, uh we have seen two things happening in this consulate. Uh first, long, long delays. Uh then, uh we have seen that for a simpler type of visa, uh they basically try to streamline the process, sometime not requiring um interview. So basically, when you apply, you also send your passport. So if they don't see anything wrong with it, they will just, you know, issue the visa and will send you back the passport or will ask you to pick it up. So it's it's a mixed bag. I mean, um generally, we've seen that in Italy, we this is one of the areas where we know better. Uh it it depends, you might have an appointment in a month, two months, sometime earlier. Sometimes, you know, it depends what kind of consulate you are applying to. Uh and you don't make that choice. It's it's based on uh on where you reside in 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 Italy in this case. So you're gonna go to Rome, Milan, or uh I don't know about Slovenia, frankly, I don't know many, considering the size of the country, probably. Uh you only have one place to apply, I would think. Um so it's it's difficult to give you like a a a an exact, you know, um estimate in term of uh timing. Uh my advice is to apply with, you know, earliest as possible because it is gonna take time. So and also factor in uh this issue, the timing issue, with your host entrepreneur because they can expect you to arrive uh based on their schedule. But you know, there is this element that it's it's outside of the control of anyone. Uh us, you, them, and it it's only in the end of the the US authorities.
I I want to add something, Federico, if you allow me. Uh because, yes, we supported the last edition of the project, eh more than thirty exchanges. And currently, we have another sixteen exchanges, some of them completed, some of them ongoing. And all of these entrepreneurs obtained their visa in a different ways, as you mentioned before. And all of them eh organized by themselves the process. Because European Commission never considered that the intermediate organization have to take the control of this situation. We give some information, as Federico told you before. We give the information about the procedures and so on, but we cannot take any responsibility because it's a personal individual eh as Federico told you before, process. Eh we cannot, it's it's unpredictable times. Eh this is, this is the only thing that I want to share in this meeting. But I want to assure to all of you that this is a program for European citizens and all of these hmm almost fifty entrepreneurs that came to to New York State, all of them obtained a visa, never have a problem because usually this trouble also with a special later commitment later from European Commission that support them, that demonstrate that this is a European eh project. Eh and I sorry if I take also the words because I want to replay also to Tony Baby that asked eh how flexible could be the relationship with the host entrepreneurs? And as you can listen before, it's flexible as you build your own relationship with your host entrepreneur. Okay, because each relationship is by is created by the new and the host entrepreneurs. And you can decide with him or her eh how flexible you can do. Eh we have many success histories from people that from New York create or continue to grow their own enterprise in Europe and can continue to work in the both sides, you know, in a smart eh a smart working because they are in the United States instead of Europe. Uh and yes, if you agree with your host entrepreneurs that you can continue to grow in your startup, maybe this is could be the project that you bring to them, okay? Because this is entrepreneurship program, it's not a study program. Eh each exchange is original and you can build whatever you you need, whatever you need. Okay, eh I'm sorry, Federico, because I there is some.
No, I think you made an excellent point, especially regarding uh the the two aspects. Uh first, you know, the flexibility of the relationship. And the second one was uh uh the visa thing. Because a visa, this is something that I haven't said before, but I wanna I'll make sure that we we understand each other. In any country, in Italy, in Slovenia, in uh uh in any other country, a visa is granted. So you, as a foreigner, you never have the right to enter a foreign country. It's a grant, it's something that is granted to you. It's an opportunity that the the country where you are trying to enter is giving you. Sometimes, you know, I remember even when I was traveling back and forth between Italy and United States, this was a concept that wasn't clear to me. But there is no um obligation for the US to admit anybody uh as as there is no obligation from any other sovereign country to admit uh foreigners in their territory. It's something that they grant and they do it on a regular basis. And you know, this is the base of exchanging uh 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 experience and 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 experiences with people going from one country to another. But as as daily mentioned, it's it's something related to the individual itself. So it is difficult to, uh we we didn't have any problem with uh with uh new entrepreneurs. We never seen anyone rejected or anyone who had a an issue entering the country. So uh so I would say so far, a hundred percent the success rate. So I can guarantee this for the future, but you know, I I am no reason to believe that this is not gonna happen again. So and this is, this is not gonna be the case again. So because the program is legit, you have the letter from the European Union, so everything works uh works well.
There is, there is another question eh from Andre.
Andre? Yeah, yeah, I've seen it. I I actually, I was trying to answer. Andre, uh I've seen, uh if you don't find, this is something that also uh somebody else uh from our staff has has uh um mentioned before. Uh if you don't find anyone that might be interesting for you on the platform itself, now, it doesn't mean that you cannot uh try to find someone on on your own and 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 use us to, you know, uh uh contact them to develop a relationship. Maybe they don't know about the program. Uh so uh if you wanna uh uh if you find a potential host that is not yet registered, let us know and and we'll try to make an attempt. There is so many ways that you, and also it shows, I think, a lot of uh uh I would say uh uh eh proactivity on your side. Uh I I found, for example, that it's it's easy to connect people uh with people on LinkedIn. And uh there might be, you know, your approach with a a a Franzegut maker uh or parlor uh entrepreneur in New York metro area. And maybe doesn't even know that there is this opportunity and we can, we can help you to connect with them as well uh once you make the first attempt. So don't just look at the at the platform because the platform clearly, it's a, it's it's growing in term of, you know, both uh applicants, so new entrepreneurs, and of course, host entrepreneurs. We make an effort on our own, but you know, um we also rely on people like you. So if there's something that is not yet in it, you can try to find it on your own and ask us to to help you out.
And I want to add it also that many relationships don't use this. Many relationships, many hosts of the AD Global that live at New York has been contacted by European entrepreneurs that show the programs, that showed his business or her business and invite him to apply. And we, Unam Cobre del Veneto from Europe and Italian American channel from New York, support this applicant and build the relationship together. Okay, if you find any suitable host, for sure, we can support you. We have many hosts in our platform, but if you find anything, you can do it by yourself.
Oh, there is another question here. Uh Alice, probably we are, we're gonna answer this one and we're gonna close because I think we are a little bit over. So uh we have um a question from uh, I hope I pronounce your name correctly, Sajad. Uh it is possible to use this opportunity to establish a company while we are in US and uh and how can we stay longer in the US? Can we participate also in a different incubator and accelerator? Uh I mean, yes, uh you you're gonna stay here for three months. And uh you know, the 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 purpose of uh of this period is to take advantage as much as you can, uh not just for the opportunity itself offered by the I global process and program, but also by, you know, using our network, our support. So I I think uh definitely um to stay longer, you know, there are various opportunity. Uh and I I don't think this is particularly the uh the place where we can discuss because it's a long discussion. But uh it's something that definitely uh could happen, that are, you know, you can start uh uh an investing process in US. Uh you can be hired by a company uh that will require your payment, your 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 obtaining of a totally different visa. But I I think, you know, it's something that definitely could uh it could happen. So um uh so I strongly encourage everyone that uh have the opportunity to spend an exchange here uh could uh could take advantage, fully advantage of of their experience.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Federico Galen and all the testimonials, Joseph, Mattia Gianluca and Beatriz. Um if you have any other questions, you will find uh my email address here. Uh Galen will also share, we can share Galen's as well together with the presentation, so you can have it for reference. And um I think that's all for now.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Thank you. Thank you all.